We'll call this meeting to order. Bailey, can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Bain, here. Councilmember Husnick, here. Councilmember Agner, here. Councilmember Freer, here. And Mayor Winnick.
Here. I'd like to ask everyone to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll look for approval of the agenda.
Some of them.
Do you have a second on that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And now, brings us to the open forum. Thank you, Bailey. Susan Young.
Susan Young, 9950 199th Street North. And the topic would be civic engagement. I noticed that you have on your meeting agenda this evening, a decrease in the number of Planning Commission members. You know, it's seldom that I am in complete agreement with the gentlemen emeritus of the front row. But I would like to see more folks participating in the government in Forest Lake. I think that more folks, more ideas, more points of view, more thoughts are good things. Forest Lake seems to be going in a different direction. Our newspaper of record is available only by subscription, either in print or online. That makes it difficult for the city to communicate with many of its residents who are not online folks. I don't have Dan Undum's tech savvy, for instance, I just don't. In the past, we've decreased the number of Park Board and EDA members, and now you're looking to decrease the number of Planning Commission members. I think that's the wrong direction. If you're looking for more people to be engaged, you want to be welcoming, you want to show folks that their input is wanted and needed and valued. You might have more folks coming to the meetings who did not have a specific topic on the agenda. If we were showing by example indeed, that we were interested in welcoming of points of view in Forest Lake, and that we really wanted our citizens to be engaged in the community. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Adam Gorbovny.
Good evening, Mayor Winnick and fellow council members. I'm here tonight to speak, and I appreciate it. My name is Adam Gorbovny III, 165 First Street Northeast, Forest Lake. I attended an Airport Commission meeting last week, and I was disturbed by the display of unprofessional behavior by Commissioners Albeck, or correction, Ashbeck and Dahlbeck. I witnessed an Airport Commissioner deliberately demean, belittle, and treat an aeronautically based business owner with disrespect, and then question the business owner's integrity and technical safety assessment capabilities for a refueling area. This occurred not only once, but four separate times during the meeting. I am shocked at this. Instead of a welcoming and open atmosphere to new business, there may as well have been a flashing closed sign. The owner of the business was cooperative, professional, agreeable, and clearly stated that he was ready to adjust any construction plans the City of Forest Lake engineers required to get the job done safely and in a timely manner. He even stated that safety was a top priority for his business, and that he respected all the safety recommendations of the city for the public airport. I'm still in shock that the Airport Commissioner at the time, Airport Commissioner Chair, Mr. Dahlbeck, did not intervene and correct or stop any of the uncalled-for behavior at the meeting. But now I understand. After the way I witnessed Mr. Dahlbeck direct disrespectful language towards our city council member, Mr. Councilmember Husnick, after speaking on an issue, I can see that respect for others, the ardent negotiation, and professionalism of the city-appointed officials has led to questionable leadership within the Airport Commission. My questions to you as a council are: One, is this how you want our city to be represented to the business community at large? Number two, and I only have two, how or what can be done to repair the egregious situation that occurred at the Airport Commission meeting, specifically regarding the time-sensitive construction issues facing the owners of the business, who've requested help from the city to safely build multiple hangars at the airport? In closing, as a citizen of this city, I feel some type of apology is forthcoming from at least two members of that board concerning their unprofessional behavior, and additional oversight of that commission is needed as well. Thank you for listening to me tonight.
All right. Kevin Schmidt.
My name is Kevin Schmidt. I live at 9807 Julip Trail, Scandia, Minnesota, Forest Lake's forgotten corner. My question to the council is, why does not the council plow the street in front of my house when it snows? My road gets plowed once every three times it snows, and about once every fifth time it snows, they may put salt and sand down. I'm sorry, there's 45 houses in the housing development that I live in, from my house until North Shore Drive, which is approximately five miles. There's only, not counting the 45 houses, there's 28 houses. I know we're at the end of the world, we're the forgotten corner, but you know, it would be nice to have a car to drive to work instead of a four-wheel-drive truck when it snows. It would be nice to be able to get out of your, get the last, the first three-quarters of a mile out to the paved road that your people deem that 235th and Inwood, Nataca, July, and Jamaica, and all the other roads that feed 230th are plowed, but 230th and Julip Trail are not plowed. I'm not expecting an answer tonight, I don't even expect an answer ever, because it's happened for so many years now, I'm tired of it. I'm just bringing it up to your attention. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming up. Sir, if I could, sir, if you could leave Donovan or someone your phone number, I'd like to follow up on that.
Sure.
And Carrie Holspuck.
My name is Carrie Holspuck, and I live at 22991 Hannah Avenue North in Forest Lake.
Thank you, sir.
And thank you for saying my name correctly. Nice job.
One of the few I got right.
I am the founder and executive director with Food for His Children, and we do community development. We do community development in Tanzania, Africa, but as a community development person, we have a community development option for Forest Lake. And listening to some tension here, it's my first council meeting I've been to, but I see there's some tension, and so I have an opportunity that's a lot of fun, and I think can draw the community together, businesses, families, schools, churches, communities. So, brackets for good. We're in a fundraising competition. We're the only Forest Lake, only Lakes area nonprofit that's in this competition. It's called Brackets for Good, Minnesota. Sixty charities are selected in Minnesota to compete, and we, it's like March Madness. So every week, we compete against one other charity. Whoever can raise the most money that week goes on to the next bracket in the tournament. Excuse me. And if you get to the final championship, then you get an extra $10,000 for your charity. Last year, we made it to the final four. I am the only staff person with Food for His Children. At that time, I was still working for the state, and so it was pretty amazing that we made it that far. We have 10 staff in Tanzania, but we are going against like Ronald McDonald House and Special Olympics, and so million-dollar nonprofits. So I need Forest Lake, everybody in Forest Lake to come alongside us and make this your community engagement, to put us on the map as a community that joins together to help a community or communities in Tanzania, Africa. And just to give you an example, the people that we work with, they can't afford $2 to pay for a medication to help their children who are suffering from a respiratory illness or a diarrhea illness, something that's very simple to fix, but they could die from it because they can't afford $2 for the medication. We have families whose kids get chased home from school because they can't send them with food to share at school. They don't have enough money, and so they can't go to primary school. They don't have enough money to send their kids to secondary school. Their lives are very different than ours, and through our program, we provide them with a loan of a dairy goat, agriculture training, animal husbandry training, entrepreneurship, savings groups training, and they're able then to provide for their own families, and that's done with just about $30 a month per family for all the services that we provide. So what I'm asking is that people would just spread the word about Food for His Children and Brackets for Good, that businesses would come together with us who are looking for silent auction donations or sponsorships, brackets for good on their site. Anyone who wants to be our teammate, we can put their Lincoln logo on the website with us, so they would give promotion with that. And also, we'll put together a video with like three seconds. If you, people with businesses want to do a three-second video saying, "Support Food for His Children," and then their business would be on there too, so it would be promotion for Forest Lake and area businesses as well. And, yeah, so churches, small groups, businesses, if anyone wants to volunteer, we've got a whole bunch of events that we're going to be doing that people can join into on our website as foodforhischildren.org, or we're on Facebook as well.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Quick question. Do you have a website that we can donate at?
FoodforHisChildren.org. And the competition actually starts March 2nd, so for it to go towards the competition, March 2nd, it's March 2nd to April 6th, and we will win this year.
All right.
Thank you.
Quick question. Can you tell me how much of every dollar donated gets actually to charity?
So, I am the only U.S. employee. We have the 10 staff that do all of the work in Tanzania. So, it's still, it's like 9% is what we pay to the organization that does all of our bookkeeping and our donation processing. And so it's staff fees and my salary, which is pretty minute.
Almost 90%.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Connie Kishel.
Connie.
Okay. I guess I'm gonna pass. Dan Parker.
I'm here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Sorry, I wasn't over there.
Here.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Connie Kishel. I live at 1023 Seventeenth Avenue Southeast in Forest Lake. I'm here to support the Residential Treatment Center that is being proposed tonight and discussed. I'm here to advocate for people with mental illness. You may know that one in five people are directly affected by mental illness. I do have a personal story. My adult son has a mental illness, actually multiple mental illnesses, and it has been a very difficult journey. I certainly wish that he was able to get treatment locally and sooner, so that's why I'm here to advocate and support for the center. The earlier the better treatment, certainly, is the name of the game. I do think the Treatment Center here in the Forest Lake area will be a wonderful asset. It will meet the needs of a number of people. I also, as well as having a personal connection, after my retirement, I volunteered at NAMI, which is the National Alliance for Mental Illness, and that turned into a job. So I am now a helpline advocate there, have been working there for a couple of years. So it's kind of in my spirit. So I would appreciate a positive response to the Residential Treatment Center here in Forest Lake. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And Dan Parker.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, it's Dan Parnell, and I live at 219 Briarwood Avenue in Mata Midae, so I'm a guest in your city. I come here as a representative of NAMI in Washington County, so I work with that group. I am an advocate, as Connie is, and I also am the District One representative to the local advisory council for mental health for the county. But I also, as a parent of a now close to 30-year-old son, who had a number of placements, who had a number of hospitalizations from the age of 15, really on until recent years, would have valued the sort of a facility that I understand that you guys are considering. Something like that would be great, because, for example, times that I spent in the emergency room in hospitals with my son, more time than not was spent not being serviced, but being, waiting for him to cycle down, so that they could release us to go home. During his treatments in residential facilities, those happened in St. Cloud, in Bemidji, in Hastings, there was nothing close to home, so I, as a family member, really had to look for those opportunities to be somewhere else. Hospitalization probably isn't needed in many of those cases, not full hospitalization the way you and I consider it, but the same level of care in something that is a sort of a step-down program would be ideal. So I support it and offer my gratitude for allowing me to speak. Thanks.
Thank you very much. And that closes out our open forum for today. Take us to the consent agenda. I'll look for a motion or changes there, too.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to remove items G and H. I didn't vote for them in the regular meeting, so I don't want to vote for them as part of the consent agenda.
All right. G and H?
Yep.
Any other changes? Okay, we'll look for a motion there.
So I make a motion to approve A through F, items I and J, removing G and H for further discussion.
All right.
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Polls? Motion carries. That brings us to items, let's do them both together here, six G and H. I'll look for a motion on those.
Are you looking for some discussion?
Well, just to approve the agenda, or approve them, or to have a discussion if we don't want to approve the findings on those.
I know at the workshop that we decided at...
Yep, so this is what we decided at the workshop.
Okay, so I make a...
And Mike, Mike didn't support it at the workshop, so he didn't want to vote for it.
Just to clarify, it was not at a workshop, it was at a council meeting. I did not vote for it, so that's why I didn't want to vote for it on the consent agenda. So, fine, moving forward.
I'd make a motion that we adopt Resolution 02-12-18-01, and Resolution 02-12-18-02.
All right. We do have a motion. Do we have a second on that?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I'll just add, I will be voting against this, just for the same reasons that I voted against the original when we discussed in council meetings.
And just for clarification, I would hope city staff wouldn't put items on the consent agenda that two council members disagreed with in the future.
All right, thank you, Mike. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Abstained? All right, motion's carried. That brings us to our regular agenda. Item 7A, the Rice Creek Watershed District update. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council staff. Thank you so much for this opportunity to come talk to you this evening. As you know, we've had a very strong partnership with the City of Forest Lake Rice Creek Watershed District, has for many years, and so we're very excited to talk to you about another great opportunity for partnership. My name is Phil Belfiore. I'm the administrator with Rice Creek Watershed District. With me this evening is our engineer, Chris Odeness, and you know Tim Olson, who's also with Bolton Bank, your stormwater engineer. So we're going to collaborate on this, and we'd be glad to answer any questions during or after. So over the last year or so, we've been working with your staff, both Engineer Goodman and Mr. Olson, on your stormwater planning, your local water planning. All communities, as you know, are required to do a bunch of planning over this last year or so. One of them is local water planning, with your land use planning and all your other systems planning, as you know. And we felt it a really golden opportunity, the Board of Managers in their vision, the Rice Creek Board of Managers in their vision, has identified one system in Forest Lake that we'd really like to talk to you about, potential partnership with you, which is to do some stormwater management planning in the area of Judicial Ditch Four watershed. And we'll show you where that is specifically in the next slide or so. But what we wanted to do, make sure you understood, is that the district is here as a partner if you wish to do some additional stormwater feasibility planning, to look at both how your water and your drainage in these public drainage systems will work with your other planning, specifically your land use planning, so that you could, as you're putting together your local water plan and your other system plans, you could do a more technical dive into the drainage in this area to see how that would work best with some of your other plans, as far as utilizing that land use and your economic development to the greatest extent, so you could use the property to its fullest extent. And what that could be is looking at some various options of how you could do some regional systems, and how that whole system could convey water most efficiently through that area, particularly in this one area that we'll show you is, seems to be an area that you're focusing a lot on the next 10 years for land use change and for economic development. So we thought this is a golden opportunity, and our Board of Managers thought this was a golden opportunity, so they did budget some money for cost share for this study to come talk to you tonight. So we're excited about that. So next slide, please. So I just wanted to, I mentioned partnership with the City of Forest Lake. Your Rice Creek's one of the most important city partners at Rice Creek. We have many cities, but Forest Lake is very important, not just for its resources, but because of its public drainage systems, and because of many of the important aspects that we focus on as a Rice Creek Watershed District. As you know, we focused on many important projects with you over the last many years and partnered with you. JD Four Repairs is, which is what we're talking to you about tonight, we just completed that about five years ago. That was our largest public drainage system to date that we ever did in that area, and includes a large wetland bank and many systems for conveying water in that area. We also did some historic reviews and maintenance on another system of public ditches, JD Five and Seven. And we also corrected a boundary and did a transfer of another drainage system with our neighbor to the North Comfort Lakes, Forest Lake, for what we call Ditch Six. So those are the systems that all flow into JD Two or Hardwood Creek, which is also part of your system that we work on with you also. We then did the Clear Lake Water Quality at your Forest Lake City Hall just to the north here, so we got to partner with you on that and got a nice, worked with you on getting a nice grant from the State of Minnesota to complete that. And that's been a very instrumental and innovative project that's been an example for many watersheds in cities around the state. And then, of course, we've worked most recently with the Forest Lake City Hall partnership with the Rice Creek Watershed District of City and the School District on the Forest Lake High School Stormwater Reuse System. And we also worked with your staff to get a nice grant to complete that as well. So we've had a lot of neat, exciting things, and then most recently, this got done, is a subwatershed analysis, going from downtown through the junior high into Clear Lake on the north side of Clear Lake, taking a look at some opportunity sites that hopefully we can partner with in the future in that area. So we've been very busy, and this is another one of those exciting, busy things that we'd like to talk to you more about today. So I'm gonna have Chris talk to you a little bit more about the technical details, and come back at the end again. So thank you again.
All right, thank you.
Mayor and City Council, again, I'm Chris Odeness with Houston Engineering. I'm the district engineer there. I'm gonna talk a little bit about the location of where we have the drainage concerns and the opportunities to be able to partner with you on some planning efforts. Next slide, please. In your packets and board packs, I believe you have three maps that we've prepared that show some of the areas that we're talking about that are drained by Judicial Ditch Four. This I have on the screen here now is an overview map of those areas. Have a few labels on the map indicating three main branches of the drainage system that are composed of tile that are located within the City of Forest Lake. There's a main trunk that's further to the north, a branch three that is located in the middle part of the graphic, and a branch four that is located on the south part of the graphic. And these tile lines drain water from the east side generally over to the west side of Forest Lake, coming in several cases across Fenway Avenue. These are agricultural drainage tiles that were constructed right around the turn of the 20th century, and they were mostly composed of clay tile back then. Over the last several years, the district has been working on doing replacement of these tile, try to repair them. They've failed and had blowouts and other failures along the way in recent years, and that's why we've been working to try to replace major sections of these drainage tiles. They carry water, again, from east to west, from the lower areas of the landscape, down over into Columbus, into the open channel that drains back over to Rice Creek. These tiles were, again, constructed to be able to drain agricultural lands over 100 years ago, but we can see that as development is occurring, they're going to need to be providing a different kind of purpose. And in some cases, the drainage system was already providing a different purpose. For instance, Branch Two, which is located on the very top of the map, it's an actual ditch or an open channel that drains the southern part of the developing area in Forest The Judicial Ditch is a public drainage system that's managed by the Rice Creek Watershed District on behalf of the benefiting landowners. These landowners were identified over 100 years ago as lands that paid into the drainage system, paid to have that benefit. And so Rice Creek Watershed District, by law, is the steward for these people to build, provide those benefits. And those benefits extend to people not only in Forest Lake, but also in the city of Columbus that are drained by the drainage system. And one important thing to note is, again, that the outlet for these drainage tiles is the main trunk of Judicial Ditch Four, which flows through the city of Columbus. And as I'll get to in a little bit here, there's a limited capacity to what the drainage system can handle in terms of flows. Next slide, please. So I'll talk a little bit about some of the challenges that we are dealing with the drainage system. As I noted earlier, the system is over 100 years old, it's been failing, we've been trying to replace it, but one important thing to note is that it was created for a purpose that is much different than what you are seeing today, both in terms of land use, you know, as the things develop, but even the usage of the land for agricultural purposes has become more intensive. And so it's become obvious that the drainage tile is not sized for the loads that are coming to it even now, but will be coming to it certainly as development occurs, and you get more impervious surface on the landscape, which creates additional runoff volume coming into the drainage tile system. One I think to note is that the tile system was constructed so it goes from lower area to lower area within the landscape, but that location of the drainage system might not necessarily be where it needs to be in order to handle stormwater conveyance as a property develops. It might not be appropriate or in the best interest of the city's land use plans to have the drainage system in its current location. So there's issues both with the alignment of the drainage system potentially, and the size of the drainage system. Many of these tiles are 12 inches or less, handling a substantial area, and I'll show you in the subsequent maps how big these drainage areas are. And there are limitations... And there are limitations too as to what the district can do in terms of doing replacement of the tile. There are requirements under state statute and processes that need to occur in order to be able to upsize the drainage tile, which is why when we've been doing our repairs, we've been replacing the tile with either equivalent size to what is now, or the tile that is slightly larger if the original tile is not available in current pipe sizing. Next slide. So what I have on the screen here now is one of those maps that has been provided in your packet. This is a map of the drainage area that comes into the main trunk of Judicial Ditch 4. Again, the main trunk in this location here is generally tile. The main trunk west of Fenway is, again, still a public drainage system as maintained by the Rice Creek Watershed District. East of Fenway, the tile was transferred over to the city. There was a proceedings that occurred, legal proceedings that occurred to make that transfer happen. One thing to note on the map here is that the area that I have shown in red on the map, that's the area that generally where flow has historically gone into the main trunk tile. There are portions of that area now that have gotten replumbed into other portions of the drainage system. That Branch 2 I was referring to earlier, an open channel that's on the kind of the southern portion of the development area, that conveys a certain amount of that drainage area currently. One thing to note, again, is that the alignment of the drainage system goes through the middle of several different parcels. Again, that might, may or may not be conducive to development as it's occurring, but there are definitely challenges that need to be addressed here. One thing that needs to be looked at is where your stormwater management facilities are going to be located, particularly ponding on the landscape. That may affect, again, where the drainage system alignment is, and may affect where your developable acreage is on landscape. And certainly, if you take every parcel that's out there, it gets developed independently with no planning to it, you may not be making the greatest and best use of the land out there, having a whole bunch of different small ponds located here, there, in the landscape. It may make a lot more sense to actually try to combine those ponded areas into a few critical locations where you can get the best bang for your buck in terms of land use, in terms of topography, in terms of your ability to take water to those locations. And that's where we think a planning effort is definitely in your best interest in this area in order to be able to manage stormwater where you need to manage it to develop your landscape plan. And that's why we recognize that there's an opportunity for both the city and for the Watershed District, as, again, the Watershed District currently is in charge of managing the public drainage system on behalf of the benefiting landowners. And that's why the district sees that there's an opportunity to be able to partner with you on such an effort. One thing to note is that if the drainage system is realigned in order to be able to make use of the most appropriate alignment for the purposes of development, that the landowner that petitions for this is responsible for those costs of the realignment, and that they're responsible for mitigating any potential wetland impacts that might occur as part of any work that's completed. So that's, again, a critical reason why doing this as a effort regionally will make a lot of sense to ensure that things aren't occurring in locations where you're not making the most use of the landscape. And, again, doing this piecemeal will likely cost a lot more money, and it will likely result in potential conflicts with your land use plan. And so with that, I'll actually have Tim just have a little discussion here regarding any other concerns he has noted about the local land area that we have shown on the map.
Thank you, Chris, and thank you, Mayor and Council. First and foremost, I've been very honored to work on behalf of the City of Forest Lake, and the partnerships that we've been able to develop with the Rice Creek Watershed District are really once in a lifetime and a career in water resources. And I think that this is just one more example of how this partnership could really be very effective for the City of Forest Lake in terms of long-term savings. I think now is a really great time to bring these things to the city's attention because of the planning effort that's happening now. Land use changes, different utility changes in this area, and not to mention the fact that the headwaters area is developing very rapidly. The area south of the Parkway, you know, is certainly next on the list. Bolton Mank in just in our, you know, design efforts in this area, plan review efforts and so on. We've done a lot of hydraulic modeling, substantially complete in this area. It's really just kind of finalizing that last step, and really understanding where future drainage concerns can be mitigated now, as opposed to waiting until it's potentially too late. The City of Forest Lake is kind of in a unique position in the watershed. Almost all of the water that lands in Forest Lake leaves Forest Lake. There's not a whole lot that comes into it. We're at a kind of a unique position at the top of two major watersheds. So the water that leaves through JD 4, you know, is, definitely impacts downstream communities and has a potential to perpetuate flooding. You know, we use a term called pulling the plug, and right now, this area drains through a very small straw. And upsizing that outlet and pulling the plug, so to speak, to mitigate flooding in this area could have some pretty serious impacts downstream. So, you know, thank you again very much for all of the opportunities that we've been able to work on in the City of Forest Lake, and I hope that this one will continue to show that that's strong partnership. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I do have a couple of questions, and I'm sure there'll probably be a few more, but I want to start it off. When you're talking about more of a regional treatment system or going that route versus what we're doing now with every little stormwater pond and things like that, so when I look at a map of, you know, like the JD 4 watershed that you got circled, would that regional system mandatory to be with inside that watershed, or could it be a little bit further downstream to still mitigate areas within the watershed? Or how, how do you figure that out? How do we work through that? We've had a great partnership with Rice Creek, but there's, there's three of us that need to all be partners. That is the land developer, the city, and the watershed district. And all too often, they look to the city, and, you know, we're trying to do everything we can, and they forget about the watershed, or, you know, that, that three-way communication is a lot, a lot less than it should be. And I think, you know, being able to do these regional systems makes a lot of sense, but how do we, how do we do a regional system and apply that to Forest Lake and not just, you know, this one area? Or do we have, you know, how do we work that out, I guess?
A few things to note. One is that you're correct that it's going to take a partnership, like you said, with the city, the watershed district, and the landowners. And part of that is a common understanding of the, kind of the hand we're dealt with as we're dealing with stormwater here, because, you know, there's going to be local rules that are applicable. There is a watershed district, there are rules that are applicable. There are state laws that are applicable, particularly with regard to wetland-type laws. And so that, those aspects need to be considered as we're looking at where the, the stormwater facilities will be located, how big they need to be located in order, you know, treat for water quality, maintain rate control, because, as I mentioned earlier, there is a limited capacity in the downstream drainage system. And so there are going to have to be stormwater ponds to be able to let the flows out slower than what they're going to be coming into that ponding. And that's very important in order to be able to make sure that we aren't dumping the water on people downstream, having flooding occur in other areas downstream. So that's kind of where the planning effort is, to see where those locations make the most sense on the landscape, and then beginning, having those discussions with local landowners after that, to see where they're going with their own personal land use plans and how that might relate to whatever stormwater planning occurs.
Thank you. How do we, I mean, is Rice Creek going to bring forward some proposals for regional systems, or how do we work together to get this going?
Sure, and I have, I think, one more slide here. Correct me if it's still there. There we go.
Is that it?
Two more, two more slides. Those are just the two maps that you had in your packet, where those other two maps, we'll go by those, but basically there's these three separate systems, Branch 3, 4 as well. But, again, so what we're asking for your consideration, and we've already, we've talked to your staff about this just initially, is an opportunity to really try to get ahead of the curve from a land use proactive perspective, given that you're also doing your other planning. We felt this was a golden opportunity. So the board has identified some cost sharing in their 2018 budget for the, a city-led stormwater master plan. That would be a cost share arrangement, just like we finished with working with Bolton Mank and your staff on the sub watershed assessment for northern part of Clear Lake. It'd be very similar to that. We'd have a cost share arrangement, and your engineer could bring forth for your consideration the scope of work, and we'd review that as well. And we would work together through an inter-agency agreement to develop a cost share arrangement to complete the work. Your engineer would, would complete the work. Obviously, we'd be in participation, but this really is something, as you've heard, because you're the land use authority and because you have that understanding of some of your systems and your networks that you need to understand, we'd be looking for the city to take the lead on the planning. And then at that point, that could be part of your integral, part of your local plan that you integrate, that we, we review from your local stormwater and your local water planning, as well as if you wish, you could integrate into your other system planning, including your land use plan at that time. So that's why we wanted to come. We know that the deadlines are coming in the next six months or so for some of your other planning. We felt this was a good, perfect time for, opportunity for you to come, for us to come forward to give you this option, given that the board, in their vision, the Rice Creek Board, has identified cost share opportunities for this specific opportunity with the City of Forest Lake.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Point of clarification, is that just a city, is that just a, the portion of Forest Lake that was, is within the Rice Creek Watershed District? Or are you proposing a citywide plan? I wouldn't expect cost share on the citywide plan. It'd be lovely, but wouldn't expect it, but what is the scope that's anticipated?
Yes, council member, Mayor, so this is for those three areas that were in your packet, and we flashed quickly by the three. They're basically the three, what we call subwatersheds, are the area that drain to those drain tiled, public drainage systems. Those are the three areas that we propose as a cost share for special stormwater feasibility work through your engineering firm, if you wish. You are also working at the same time on your overall citywide local water plan. That's not something that we have cost share with you, but we do have staff available at any time to sit down and work with your staff if they have questions, or if they'd like to work through drafts with our staff. We have that service as well, free of charge, if you will, for your engineers to work with that. So we would help you with that as well, but we don't have the cost share available at this time.
Is all of Rice Creek's drainage area from Forest Lake basically from Highway 61 to the west, or do you get into the, you know, farther east?
Sure. I believe you're, you're talking south of this area in red, Mr. Mayor, or?
Well, just in general. I mean, I thought Rice Creek, you know, Watershed District went all the way towards the border of Scandia, or into Scandia.
No, we're, we, Mr. Mayor, the, the other area that is in Rice Creek of the City of Forest Lake is just south of this red area, and those are those systems I mentioned earlier. There are Washington Judicial Ditch 5, 7, and 5, which drain into what's called Hardwood Creek or JD 2, which is, it wraps from Hugo and then kind of wraps in a horseshoe around the southern portion, and then leaves again, goes back into Hugo. So those systems drain south into that JD 2 system. And then there's also, so those are, those are the other areas that we are within the City of Forest Lake as well.
All right, thank you very much. Any other questions? All right.
All right, I'll ask one. I always get scared when water people talk about cost share. What do you mean by cost share? I mean, are you talking 50%? Are you talking 10%? Talking 100%? That may be 99, so it would be share.
Right. It depends, I guess, short answer is it depends on what your scope of services is. I believe that our staff and your engineering staff are of like mind as far as general, the general vision of that. So I think that we'd probably be in the 50% area, depending on what the overall cost is, but we've, with other cities, we've been in that 50% area for this type of work.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. One question. Oh, Ed, go ahead. Could you tell me, I guess I'm looking for what are the trump cards, landowners number one, I take it? As far as, who's got authority to do what? You want to do something in somebody's private land?
Well, I can take a cut at that. So this, this is an opportunity to do planning, so it's not, we're not at the engineering phase of figuring out exactly, okay, you will do a pond here, or what you, it'll be options at a big picture perspective, looking at, if you looked at one of those map areas, like the one on your, you see on the screen, if you were to look at that overall red area and say, what are some options for where the conveyance system could go when it's ultimately developed, and where some regional ponds could go as options of when it's ultimately developed? And then at that point, what that would be is a sounding board, or at least something to put forward when you, if you were to want to sit down with some landowners in that area, and other stakeholders in that area, and say, here's some options that we're looking at. What do you think of this option versus this option? So it's not dictating, if anything, it's, I guess, the opposite, which is you're bringing forth a study, or at least a draft study, and then you gain some input from people as far as what the pros and cons are. And then you could also think about what, as a city overall, what your master plan or your economic and transportation corridors, and what those look like, and see if there's a way to bridge a win-win for everybody involved. That's kind of the ultimate theory behind the plan like this.
The other question I had is, you made the statement, or in the presentation here, that a lot of those drain tile are 100 years old, I presume, or, and undersized for what we're doing today. But yet, due to state law, you can't always just upsize. It seems to me like a waste of time and money to put in the same-sized tile that you know is too small to start out with.
Well, one thing to keep in mind about that is that the district still has a responsibility, again, to be the steward for those benefiting landowners. So there are landowners that are still utilizing that tile, and as the system is decaying, it needs to be replaced, or else it's, they'll be having fields get, getting flooded, that sort of thing. So that, the district has been picking those areas apart one by one, replacing the tile in those areas, and trying to do that sort of fix to get through under current land use and be able to manage the drainage system for the benefit of the current land use. And, again, you know, that's one reason we're coming here today, is that if there are different land uses that are going to be utilized out there, it pays to get some planning done now so that as any further construction that is done, or any other management of stormwater is done, it's done per land use plan and not just as a fix for current issues.
All right. Mara, did you have another?
Yeah.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Mayor, members of council, I'd like to present a zoning text amendment to amend a section of the zoning text regarding residential care facilities. And this particular, the, I'm sorry. This particular use, application is applied for by Kraus Anderson. And this application did receive a recommendation of approval from the Plan Commission, was reviewed on January 10th. I'd like to review the actual zoning text amendment, but also give you an introduction into how the zoning code deals with licensed residential facilities within the city. They are, you know, this is regarding residential facilities serving more than 10 persons. And it's a conditional use in And it's a conditional use in many of the residential zoning districts, including agriculture preserve, agriculture, rural residential, single family, et cetera. And it's also listed in the use standards as a conditional use in all commercial industrial districts. I'll get more to the use standards in a second here. However, in the multiple family zoning district, this use is allowed as a conditional use if it is located within an existing single-family dwelling. So that's a little different than how it's dealt with in the other, other zoning districts. And once it is, let me jump over to the, where these multiple family zoning districts are in the city. We're going to locate them mostly in the western side of the city. That's where there's, you know, larger roads to accommodate greater traffic that these uses generally generate. And so we have this over here off Everton, on the north side of downtown. I'm sorry. Sorry about that. Let me, let me back up then. Again, apologize for that. So this is regarding residential care facilities serving more than 10 persons, conditional use in these agricultural, and, you know, residential zoning districts. And then it's a commercial industrial zoning district is a conditional use. But there in multiple family zoning district, as the text shows there, it's, could be only located as a conditional use with an existing single-family dwelling. Now, if I could show you again the zoning map, and these clouds represent basically where, where there's multiple family zoning. The multiple family is a, is a use, is also located within the mixed-use zoning district along here, similar density. But this is strictly the multiple family MF zoning district, is located here on the north side of the downtown, on, over here on Everton, on the west side of the interstate. These areas around 12th Street and 11th Avenue, southwest. And then we have areas more toward the south of the city, here at the intersection of 61 and, well, and Scandia Trail. That's the location of Arbor Ridge, for instance. And then we have locations here in Headwaters, as part of the original PUD, and also here at 202nd Street and Highway 61. These areas down here represent where there are only vacant multiple family parcels, largely vacant, undeveloped as multiple family. That's here, and also here near the, near the end of the free airport runway. So once it's been established that, you know, within a location, you know, a proposal may come forward for a licensed residential facility, and then it, as a conditional use, it's reviewed with these criteria. And again, serving, if, for a facility serving over 11 individuals, it's a CUP in all commercial industrial uses, must, you know, also comply with state and county agency regulations. And some things relate to appearance. One major thing is that the, that the facility can accommodate individual who's a direct threat to the health and safety of other individuals. So these are not meant to be correctional facilities, simply health, healthcare facilities. Parking must be accommodated, you know, there must be adequate utilities, building and fire codes must be met. And then residential care facilities should not be closer than 1,000 feet to each other. As I mentioned, Kraus Anderson is the applicant for this. And, you know, as this, it's, it's a zoning text amendment, but they did provide a rough concept site plan of what could, could be placed on this multiple family zone district here. This is 202nd Street, Highway 61 here, on the west side. And with the single-story facility here, their idea is, is to keep existing stable facilities as a kind of adjunct for equine therapy for the patients. But this is a, you know, this is just simply to give an idea of, of this particular site. But it is a zoning text amendment. The language here drafted by the city attorney, you know, has the actual ordinance language here. And the residential facility would be, simply be inserted here as a principal use, principal conditional use, residential facility licensed serving more than 10 persons, and then deleting that, that qualification that it can only be within an existing single-family home only. Of course, this is a zoning text amendment. There are many things to consider. And right now, we're actually, you know, in the midst of a comprehensive plan amendment. And so we're considering different uses. And, you know, in the midst of that, and this is something of, you know, you know, a single thing that might have, you know, impact on that comp plan, planning. Also, it could have impact on the loss of affordable housing, which many of our multiple family areas do offer that. And that could impact how we, you know, meet our affordable housing goals. Also, since the only empty multiple family parcels are in the, in the south, we, you know, also could affect the, how dispersed those multiple family areas are throughout the city. And also, right now, such an institutional use isn't consistent with the purpose, stated purpose of the, the multiple family district, which is to maintain the residential character in those areas with high density, multiple family development. But also what I believe that, you know, may, we have many representatives from Kraus Anderson, and Cambia Hills, the operator of the, of a potential facility, and they'll present a good, you know, give a presentation on, you know, how this facility could be handsome and getting more into that, the facility. But right now, what you have before you is the zoning text amendment to delete that one sentence and insert that one sentence, to allow this type of use, licensed residential facility serving more than 10 persons, as the conditional use with those use standards within the city of Forest Lake. At this point, I'd like to take any, happy taking questions from city council.
All right, thank you, Donovan. Any questions for Donovan at this point? Well, I personally don't support the change on this. Not that I don't support the facility, or that, you know, you're doing wonderful job. I don't believe this is the right location for it. Any other input?
So maybe piggybacking a little bit on kind of where the mayor's heading with your statement. So one of the, one of the considerations is whether this is in line with our comprehensive plan. So walk me, I just want to make sure I'm crystal clear on what happens as we update that plan. So we are considering today a change to the zoning text. We will, in the future, be considering updates to our comprehensive plan, and then we'll be making zoning updates to align our zoning regions or areas in line with that comprehensive plan. Is that right?
Correct.
But that doesn't go back and change the ordinance. So if we've changed the ordinance, the ordinance, Susan's nodding. If we've changed the ordinance, that doesn't change necessarily with the comprehensive plan. Does that make sense? Does my question make sense?
Correct. I mean, you know, as noted in, in your, in your packet, Bridget, the city attorney, did note that there are a lot of inconsistencies, and I agree with her. And that, I welcome that as an opportunity to, you know, in that comprehensive rezoning, following the comp plan adoption, to take care of some of those inconsistencies. But, you know, the, but generally, what the, what the, you know, that, what that's focused on with the comprehensive planned option is to get, you know, you know, the rezoning is to get it consistent with the recent changes in the comp plan.
So we would be changing zoning districts, not necessarily as part of that process, changing zoning text?
Correct.
As you've mentioned, there is opportunities to fix some of those inconsistencies.
Yeah, I mean, it'll, it, a lot of it depends on community, you know, input.
Of course.
You know, what, what we all just, you know, what the community vision is.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Donovan, doesn't it make more sense to actually do this after the comprehensive plan?
I mean, there's certain argument for that, yes, because the tinkering with the zoning ordinance, you know, the amendments, there's a lot of moving parts, and there are unforeseen consequences in that way. And that's something of what I brought up with, you know, it's, it does relate to affordable housing, for instance, is an impact. But we haven't studied that. I mean, this, you know, this came forward, you know, in lots of ways, it's, it's, you know, multiple family district allows nursing homes as a conditional use. This, you know, is somewhat like a nursing home, but, you know, there might be other important pieces that, you know, I don't see right now.
I don't think it's anything like a nursing home, actually, but, other than people stay there, but I, I think this is coming forward too early in the process, and so I'm not in favor because of that. I'm also not sure it's the right location, too, to have the facility. I think the work they do is, is absolutely fantastic, and, and NAMI is a fantastic organization, so I fully support their organization. But I don't think this is the right spot, and I think it's the wrong time to be bringing it forward. I think it would be more appropriate after the comprehensive plan is done.
Go ahead, Ed. Only questions I had is, if you change, right now, it's limited to, the way I understand it, no more than 10 persons. And then if we changed it, what would we be changing it to? I don't see a, a number. It just says 10 or more.
Right, that's the, that's the current zoning text language.
But what is more?
More is, it's not really defined. You know, it might be limited to what can be served in the site, you know, what, as far as like, you know, public infrastructure, or stormwater facilities, or parking, or those, those things usually limit. So I haven't, you know, we haven't seen one. I mean, we have, you know, nursing homes that, you know, like Seabirchwood, for instance, that, you know, have many homes. And it's never been really an issue as far as, you know, the density thing, so.
Donovan, you mentioned a couple of times the impact that this was, would have on affordable housing, as an example. Can you elaborate further on how this, which isn't resident, or isn't affordable housing, what is the impact?
Well, I mean, it's, we haven't studied it that far. The Met, a lot of these goals are related to livable community goals, and it's Met Council planning. As a, as a city, we're given kind of a goal. And we don't have to, the city doesn't have to go out and build any affordable housing, but what they're looking for is areas, you know, adequate areas that are zoned for more than eight dwellings per acre. And that's what they consider kind of the threshold for getting affordable. Well, we have, you know, only, only areas that are zoned more than, that allow more than eight dwellings per acre are multiple family and the, and the mixed use, whether it's MU1 or MU2, which is pretty much, you know, the 61, Highway 61 corridor, north of 97. And so, you know, these are multiple family parcels are largely, usually larger parcels, and I think it'd be hard to argue that a licensed residential facility could be considered affordable housing, so that you're taking that out of the.
The opportunity cost.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Which does go back to some of, you know, to echo some of the previous comments, this is a tough decision to make right now, given all of the conversations that are going to be coming up in the next 18 months on the comprehensive plan. Because all, all of those impacts, I think, in our ultimate land use plan are all impactful, and one of the conditions is, is it in line with the comprehensive plan? And we're, you know, I think, looking at each other thinking, there's, there's lots of moving pieces there.
Donovan, have any of the neighbors and surrounding developments been contacted or informed, or have there been meetings about this at all?
No, there hasn't been any sort of public notification. You know, it's a zoning text amendment, it's, it's citywide, and so we don't do a specific thing. If this came forward as a development proposal, there is a notification process, and we would get the word out to the neighbors.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to hear from the applicants and see what they're proposing, at least, if we've got time to do that.
Sure.
Like to hear, if that's possible.
Mayor Winnick, members of the council, I'm, my name is Jeff Brott. I'm the chief executive officer at the Hills Youth and Family Services, and I thank you for this opportunity to tell you a little bit about this project. I, I hope I can generate a little bit of excitement about it. I started my career as a Lutheran lay minister, and then I went to the Department of Human Rights as a civil rights investigator. From there, to the Pollution Control Agency, Department of Public Safety, and then 20 years working for nonprofits. So my whole career, it's been about trying to do good things for communities. And, and I hope that you'll be excited about what we want to do here. And so in just a couple of minutes, I want to tell you a little bit about, I think, the three questions that you probably have foremost in your mind, and that is, who is this facility going to serve? How is it going to serve them? And what impact will this campus have on the city? And let's start with the who it's going to serve. Typically, by the time a family finds its way to our door, they have tried everything else. They have tried outpatient therapy, they have tried day treatment, and mom and dad are pretty desperate, looking for a way to help their son or daughter. We'll care for up to 60 children at the facility. They'll be boys and girls ages six to 17, who will have treatable mental health conditions. They will only be eligible for admission to our facility if professionals in the field believe that it will be possible to stabilize them and return them to mom and dad. So it's important work that'll be done here, life-changing work. We'll be working primarily with two diagnoses, children with mood disorders, such as depression, anxiety, and post-traumatic stress disorder, and then children with neurologic damage, such as fetal alcohol syndrome, kids on the autism spectrum, and children with traumatic brain injuries. And they will be children from the local community, and they will be children from around the state. So how do we help these children and families? A residential campus allows us to create a therapeutic environment that is all-encompassing, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Everything that happens to the child at that residential campus, the school experience, the design of the facility, meals, recreation, relationships with the staff, everything that happens there is designed to help the child get better. So residential settings often can help children that haven't been helped through, again, day treatment or outpatient therapy, or many other interventions that have been tried over the years. One of the earlier tests to individuals that talked to, talked about, you know, repeated trips to emergency rooms with, without having any success. So this will be a facility that will help moms and dads and childrens who haven't been able to find help anyplace else. We've operated a facility like this for almost 50 years in Duluth. At our campus there, one of the elements that we have is a really expansive animal husbandry program, which we combine with gardening and a 4H program. We send dozens of kids every year to the St. Louis County 4H competition, as a result of the animal husbandry and gardening that they have done at our Duluth campus. One of the reasons we're so excited about this site is it presents us with an opportunity to even expand on that at the Forest Lake facility and add horse therapy. And that would potentially be a program that would be open to other people in the community who need those services. And it also offers the possibility that we could continue to have that stable available for people who are currently using it, the stable facilities. So we think it would preserve a really important community asset, that historic farmstead. And then lastly, what other impacts besides preserving this historic farm site and these, and the rural, rural character of that property? The other impact that it will have, again, first and foremost, we will be doing this life-changing work with families, including families from the community who will benefit from it. And it will be a beautiful facility. We are working with Kraus Anderson, TKDA Engineering, and then Architectural Investments, which is an architectural firm out of Louisville, Kentucky, that works exclusively on the design. out of Louisville, Kentucky, that works exclusively on the design of, uh, behavioral health facilities. And so you'll see a little bit of a, uh, uh, presentation later that 'll show you what the outsides of some of these buildings look like. But, uh, Dave Hartford, the administrator, uh, of this facility, and I have toured probably close to a dozen facilities. And I can tell you what we're going to do in Forest Lake is going to be very special. We will have people from around the country come to look at this facility because it is going to be a state-of-the-art facility. We're going to do something very different here, uh, in an effort to create, again, an environment which is, um, therapeutic and all-encompassing in a way that no other environment does that. Dave and I recently toured the Prairie Care Facility in Brooklyn Park, brand-new facility. And I can tell you, this will look and feel very different even than that beautiful facility. Um, second, as I already mentioned, uh, we plan to use this way, you know, to use, develop this site in a way that will preserve the historic feel of the property. It's difficult to imagine that any other use of the property, uh, would maintain the character in the way that we are. Of the 40-some acres, we're only going to be using about 16 acres, uh, for the facility, and that's right along Highway 61. The rest of, of the acreage will be left essentially as it is. If you look at the other conditional use permit, conditional uses that are already allowed, uh, in the multi-site, you look at the government buildings, a utility substation, manufactured housing, or a nursing home, it's hard to imagine that any of those uses or any other use that might eventually be proposed for the property would maintain the, the rural, uh, feel that we're going to maintain and would maintain those historic farmstead buildings. And lastly, uh, we're going to bring, uh, over 150 well-paying jobs and over $10 million worth of wages and benefits to the community. Um, and, uh, it's a site that is going to require relatively little infrastructure, no interior streets, um, just going to bring a lot of really good-paying jobs and some very important work to the city. Um, that's a very quick overview of the project, but I hope that it's given you a sense that this facility is going to be a very special place. And it's a place that, that we hope to, uh, 10 years down the road, that everybody in Forest Lake will be, feel good about the fact that this facility is located in Forest Lake. Many other places we could, we could put it, we've looked all over the metro area, and we believe that this is the best place to put it. And we, we'd love to put it here. So thank you very much. If you have any questions, I'd, I'd be happy to answer them. Again, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, uh, council members, thank you for the time this evening hearing us. My name is Mark LaClan. I'm with Kraus Anderson Development. This is Brandon.
I'm Brandon Elgar with Kinley Horn and Associates. Uh, we're assisting Kraus Anderson and the Hills on their development. Um, Donovan, if you could just scan on the next slide.
Thank you.
So what we wanted to do is highlight, um, a couple of the facilities that, uh, the group that Jeff had mentioned, Architectural Investments, and the Hills have done, uh, nationally, and kind of give an idea of what, you know, some of these finishes may be and what the facility may look like. We're still very early on in the design process, so, um, we're using these as, as kind of guiding ideas, but, uh, again, we'll give you a sense at, at some of the potential that this facility could have on the site. As you can see with this specific facility, uh, higher-end architectural finishes, a lot of stone and masonry. Um, Donovan, you want to scan to the next one, please? Um, you know, again, utilizing the, um, the landscape as part of the site as well. So creating an outdoor space for the residents and families visiting the facility to spend time and, and heal and, and, um, be with each other. Donovan, keep going down. Um, again, some of the interior spaces so feeling, um, like a welcoming place and a place where, where folks can get the, the help and the healing that they need. Um, and then go ahead, Donovan, and just pass down one more. And again, just, you know, some of the classroom elements, um, exterior finishes, um, some of the interior finishes as well, really, um, trying to give this facility a, a very high, um, sense of place and a very good feeling about, um, kind of the finishes and, and the healing environment. Um, and then Donovan, you can just scan to the, the last slide. So as Jeff mentioned, uh, the site really does present a, a very unique opportunity for this development. It's a large site. Um, basically, the easterly, you know, two-thirds of it are proposed to be left as-is. And, and really, um, we feel the benefit of this site is in the character that the site currently has. And there, um, you know, it's a, it's a beautiful landscape. There's the, the barns that, um, the wetlands and, and a lot of, um, great opportunity out here to really build within a site as opposed to completely redeveloping it and, and scraping and starting anew because it's got great bones. Um, we're looking conceptually at this point, and the exhibit that Donovan presented was, again, a very early-on concept sketch, but really the, the development more focused along 61. And again, that, um, not only provides a buffer throughout the entire neighborhoods, but really allows the opportunity for some of those, um, you know, healing environments, like Jeff had mentioned, of, of taking advantage of that outdoor space.
Yeah, and I could actually coincidentally speak. I specialize in low-income housing tax credit and affordable mixed income development for Kraus Anderson. We're working on a number of those projects. So this is something that we believe in the mission from a company, you know, ownership perspective. And, and this is our first time working with the Hills Youth and Family Services in this regard, and also helping them answer the RFP through the State, uh, Department of Health and Human Services. So, but my primary deal is multifamily. And it, I think the impetus would be to leave or preserve some of those open spaces, preserve the rural character and some of, um, you know, building and expanding trail network, uh, really protecting those wetlands and doing some of the things on the site. But there, there has been discussion internally about, we are purchasing the entire 38 and some change acreage, about what future development could look like on the site. And without having to change anything right now from the zoning classification or the comp plan amendment side, um, there could be a complementary and cohesive way to do hundreds of units of affordable housing on this that I don't think would be overly impactful to either one of those prospective developments. So, I mean, this is a little bit out of the purview of what we came to talk here about. But when I go in and speak to most councils, um, about doing multifamily housing developments, the first thing they ask me is, is job creation. They talk about bringing mixed use into a site and bringing jobs and/or commercial uses to it. In this case, we have 150 full-time employees with a $10 million payroll. And then we could also potentially do hundreds of units, helping that Met Council affordability ratio, or do mixed income or workforce housing. So I think there's a scenario here that a lot of the metros that we talk about just straight multifamily with, and there is really no job creation to consider, you know, an apartment management group outside of the community handles all of that. So it's kind of a best-case scenario on both fronts. But again, this is outside of the purview that we were here to talk about. It's just an expertise and a passion of mine, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Dave Snyder. I'm an attorney, and I generally practice on your side of the table, but I was invited by Kraus Anderson and Cambia Hills to learn a little bit more about their project and help with some of the more technical aspects of the zoning code amendment that they sought here. To that end, we met with staff and had a couple of meetings and basically took staff's direction relative to what would be needed to put in place a situation where, uh, a campus like this could be developed. Um, as part of my, uh, study of the project and getting up to speed on what was being offered here and so forth, it was, it became quite fascinating as I looked at it. What I learned was, as previously mentioned, uh, the facility itself would, uh, total some $20 million in terms of actual improvements. The payroll, the ongoing payroll, we're not talking about a temporary thing or a spike, is $10 million on an ongoing basis. And these are jobs that run the spectrum from, uh, nurses to psychologists, to psychiatrists, to desk workers. It will be a significant, um, boost and economic driver for many things. And, uh, I found, uh, that to be important, given the goals of the city as I understood them. But most significantly, I learned a little bit about the types of services that the facility would offer. And, uh, what I learned is that it will serve children between the ages of six to 17 who suffer from types of, uh, maladies, psychological or otherwise, that affect everybody and every family in every way these days. This includes things like autism, neurological disorders. Uh, it can include mental illness. Uh, it can include children who have suffered some form of injury. It does not, not that this is necessarily relevant to your consideration at this stage, involve drug and alcohol treatment as such. And it does not involve adjudicated, uh, children, children who have run afoul of the law and, and are being sent here for that reason. It is our children that, uh, encounter these difficulties and can. Uh, and it provides a local resource and a local opportunity for them to be here near their families, uh, and, uh, in their school district. I also learned, as part of my consideration and evaluation of this, that there'll also be, uh, classrooms offered in the school. 916 School District will be offering teaching opportunities right there. So the kids, uh, who otherwise wouldn't have a place to be between home and say, uh, a full-on psychiatric or full-on care facility can be in an, an environment like this, receive their education, and have the added benefit of having the open space and the farm next to them, which this developer proposes to integrate right into it and to preserve the historic farmstead and all the uses associated with that. Um, this, to me, sounded like a fabulous opportunity, um, albeit with some work ahead, to, to bring to this area and to offer to the, to our, our friends and neighbors here. And with that in mind, we looked at the uses that were permissible on this site, had some great discussion with the property owners and talked to staff. And that's what brings us here today. It's been pointed out that there's some inconsistencies in the code insofar as, uh, uses like this are permitted in single-family houses. We could develop a fairly sizable facility right on this site today because there's just a single-family house on it. But we want to offer the campus that we propose to offer and to integrate the agricultural uses into it and also make available some of those ag uses for the local community to share in. We're talking about access, walking trails, uh, husband, animal husbandry and so forth. Um, there's, there was a lot to learn, and there will be a lot to learn for anyone who wishes to hear more about the project. I understand that at the outset of your meeting, there was an indication that, uh, it might not be supported by you at this stage. But I would ask you this. If we're given an opportunity to talk more about the potential uses that can go on the site, including things that address other goals that this council may have, affordable housing, more rural integration, amenities for the neighborhood and the city generally, if we're given a chance to talk about those things, I think at the end of the day, we can show you a proposal that you would be very proud of. If we left the mission aside, if we left the fact that we're serving children between the ages of six and 17 with a badly-needed service, uh, that they currently have to go out of state for many times today, out of state, Forest Lake kid, for example, may end up in Wisconsin or Iowa to receive these types of things. The bottom line is that if there's any, um, reluctance on your part to act on this tonight, my suggestion and request to you would be that you direct staff to work with the applicant, to consider both a zoning text amendment and the conditional use permit simultaneously at an upcoming meeting, where you have a chance to get your teeth into it, to learn a little bit more, to hear from the, your neighbors as well, and for us to refine our proposal and explain precisely what is intended here. And if as part of that discussion, you find that some affordable housing or commercial development or other community amenity need that you want to see on the site, uh, you identify such a need, or we work with you and we're able to, to identify what it is you'd like to see, we'll do what we have to do to make it happen. Um, there's surplus land here, but we did not come in with a view to saying, "We're going to maximize development on this site." We came with a view to saying, "What's good for the mission?" Having our relatively modest facility, having the jobs, but integrating it with the historic rural character of this area sounded to us like a great idea. But we recognize that you may have some additional or different suggestions. And so the thing I would ask, if there's, if there's not a sense tonight that you'd approve the text amendment outright tonight, then my request would be that you'd, uh, table the matter and ask staff to work with us to evaluate both the text amendment and the CUP simultaneously. And that will give you a chance to look at it comprehensively.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Based what I'm hearing from the conditions that these kids have, autism and whatever the case may be, you named off several different things, you do realize that it's off the end of the airport. There's a runway there and it's fairly close proximity where, would that be, would this affect those kids?
We've got decades of experience working with kids, uh, that autistic kids, kids that suffer from a neurological disorder of some kind. Uh, security of the kids is primary, and the facility is designed in a way that really leaves it in a compact location on the site, down in the southwest corner, and that gives, you know, ample security for passersby, for them. It confines activities. They're not, uh, confined in the sense that they're dangers, but they're, uh, well-supervised by a team of professional. And, and that's why, that's why, for example, the payroll is what it is.
That's not exactly what I was worried about. I'm not worried about the kids coming and bothering the airport.
Oh.
I'm worried about the airport bothering the kids as far as noise or an airplane taking off or whatever. And, and, uh, you know, if that's, uh, something that causes stress or whatever, you know.
No, I appreciate your concern on that. But, um, as I say, the, it's difficult to overstate the asset that's presented by having a facility like this that you can integrate into a, an active rural farm like we have here. You know, as your, as your code is currently configured, you could put this thing in, in an industrial zone tomorrow. You know, with a, with a, basically a building permit. But here we have the rare opportunity to integrate it into a rural residential setting. And that environment, we're confident that we know, and this is why we're focused on this site, is going to be so beneficial to these kids. It's what we have to focus on. It's what is really going to make this a standout, uh, campus, not just in the state, but nationwide.
All right. Any other questions?
I got one question.
Yes, sir.
I believe, are these children, are they housed 24/7? Or are some of them come and go, parents can pick them up, or?
I'm going to ask Dave to speak to that. He's our, a manager, and he can talk to you a little bit more about that.
Good evening, uh, Mayor Wenick and, uh, council members. I'm Dave Hartford, and I'm the administrator for this project. Um, and I could tell you that I've been in this business for more than 25 years. I've been the administrator for Health East, running the Health East programs in behavioral health, also with Centra Care. Uh, also, I had a run as a former, uh, Assistant Commissioner for Department of Human Services. And this is a rare opportunity. I mean, what is being proposed here, and I'm trying to have people really appreciate what's happening right now, that this is a new level of care for children. And one of the things that we heard earlier today is how important it is to move upstream with our children's mental health. And the state is in crisis today in getting access to these services. And it's a very good thing that the state, federal government, has started to recognize this need and started to move some money. While we are under, uh, constraints around getting facilities up and, uh, up and running, this is a very unique opportunity. Like I say, I've been in this business a long time. I've never seen an opportunity to take $25 million in new money, build a state-of-the-art facility that is at an inpatient level of care. So this is psychiatrists, nurses, this isn't just, so I'm just trying to dispel any misconceptions anyone might have about what this facility is. This is a high-level facility, and we will be building this facility in the next near future. And we all have been, uh, in love with this, this- And we all have been in love with this site since we first saw it because of the opportunities around animal husbandry, between the open space that it allows, the great partnerships with some of your, both your independent school district and also intermediate school districts. So we need to continue to move on in this and get this cited, and I think this is a great opportunity for both the city of Forest Lake and for the hills and all of the members of your community. So I just really urge you to continue to take a look at this without just passing it down, because the timelines for the children aren't going to wait down the line for, no offense, they're not going to wait for planning, that these facilities need to get opened. So just, and I'm also here for questions. Thank you.
The question, are they 24/7?
Yes, they are. This is, if you think about this, it's also a highly regulated facility. It is both federally, Department of Human Services, and also the Minnesota Department of Health. So there's three different regulatory agencies overseeing this. This doesn't exist in the state of Minnesota today, this level of care. That's what I mean. It's a very rare opportunity to bring this level of care and these resources. It's a gap, and it was mentioned earlier about how our kids today are going out of state to get this level of service.
So is this somewhat different than Prairie Care, which was mentioned before?
That is an inpatient hospital facility. This is a psychiatric residential treatment facility, so it is at a very similar level of care. But it technically is not a residential, it's not only a residential. This is kind of between those two levels of care.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Any other questions?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. Mr. Mayor, I'm John Tierhart with Gawn Companies. I represent the seller, the potential seller of the land. I think it's really, from my perspective, a little premature to get into the transaction. You guys can make decisions on that. That's not really the matter that's before us. We're here to change two lines to zoning ordinance with a text amendment. It was my understanding that staff thought that this created, you know, some additional equity and cleared up some omissions or inconsistencies within the zoning ordinance. So that's really all we're here to talk about tonight, and perhaps, I don't have any place telling you guys what to do, but I think there's kind of a communication clarification that might be helpful. So, you know, I did not expect us to be talking about a specific transaction. Clearly, I'm representing the seller. I'd love the transaction to go forward, but my understanding is that we were here to talk about a zoning change that created equity, and it will affect your other sites that are zoned this way as well. But it was my understanding that it was perceived as an improvement, the transaction aside. And with that, I'll sit down unless you want to ask me any questions.
All right. Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Just briefly, that said, as I say, if there's any indication, if you feel like you need more information, understanding, public input on this, my request would be that you consider it jointly with the CUP. We've worked with your staff on deadlines, and we'll work with them going forward. We do have a pressing timeline, like to be in the ground next year. That's what is needed and required from our standpoint. We respect your processes. But I think if you give us the opportunity to talk about both the CUP and specifically what it looks like, what it means, day-to-day, who's the patient, who are the children? How do they live? What are the farm uses that are going to happen here? Are there opportunities for additional uses on that space? And the answer is yes. We can do other things there, too, that suits you and makes sense for your planning, affordable housing or otherwise. If we can do these things jointly, we can deliver a very good project to you that everybody can be proud of, and that if the need unfortunately ever arises, we'll be there to serve anybody in Forest Lake who has need of it. So I'm asking for your indulgence on that point and look forward to working with you. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, if I could interject for a moment. As a condition of the planning commission approval was to actually hold a public hearing at the city council review. We had complied with the local, with the zoning code requirements for public notification, notifying, you know, putting a notice in the paper, though it wasn't listed on the agenda, and one of the planning commission members requested that we do that formal, and there was a public hearing held at the planning commission level. But if you could simply do the formal opening of the public hearing to comply with that condition.
I'm not sure it's a requirement. I mean, the planning commission can make a recommendation, but I don't think they can require us to hold a public hearing, can they?
For the zoning text amendment, I don't think we would need to.
No, I mean, we did hold a public hearing. I checked with the city attorney if there was any sort of, you know, technical error there, and no, the state statute doesn't mention the need to have it listed in the agenda. The minute it showed that there was a public hearing, that is a requirement of the zoning code, and we did comply with the other requirement to notice it in the paper.
I don't have a problem with having a public hearing anytime, but I was just trying to make sure that because the planning commission voted that way, it doesn't require the council to have a public hearing, but I'm fine with a public hearing if we want to.
Correct, it is a recommendation, yes.
Without it being listed on the agenda, I have an issue with holding a public hearing. You know, if we want to table it, that's one thing, but I just didn't deal with that.
That's what we'd have to do, because we'd have to publicize it, you know, to make sure.
Yeah, I don't want to.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to table, so we can have a public hearing and have staff have more conversation with the applicants about CUP as well as the text amendment and table until the next council meeting.
Second.
Discussion.
Go ahead, yeah.
It's done open for discussion, you can't, on a table.
On a table, you can't discuss. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Planning Commission Ordinance.
Can you take us through that one, Dan?
Yeah, let's give it to him.
Dan, can you take us through the planning commission ordinance change?
Absolutely. Mayor, members of the council, what you have before you here is ordinance number 673, which is an ordinance that reduces the planning commission from seven members down, or from nine members down to seven members. This was discussed in the January 16 city council workshop, and there was direction at that point, provided the staff to prepare an ordinance that would reduce the planning commission from nine to seven members. What you have before you here is 673, which is a result of that work. Currently, there are two vacancies on the planning commission, so if this ordinance is approved, nobody would need to vacate their seat. There's basically two open seats that just would not be filled, so there's no need to adjust the current membership. At this point, the question action is approval of ordinance 673, which would reduce the city of Forest Lake planning commission from nine to seven members. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Dan.
I have two quick questions. How long have those vacancies been open?
I believe they've been open since January of this year is when those two seats came up, and the two people resigned and weren't.
And weren't reappointed, okay. So it's been a little while. There was a question that came in through, came in through, I think, to staff, and Dan, I got your response, but I still don't understand it, on the laddering of moving from three to one year, three for two years, and three for three years. And I understand we're not establishing a planning commission. However, continuing to maintain that looks, in my opinion, looks wrong, and my recommendation would be to strike that altogether and just stay seven, and using their current sequence of appointments.
And we couldn't easily strike that out of the ordinance. You know, I mean, that's, again, it was because we're not establishing a new commission, that's why that language was stated, it's historical in context, but agreed it does kind of provide some sort of muddles the water a little bit moving forward.
So I would make a motion to approve ordinance 673 with that sentence struck out.
I'll second. All right, any further discussion?
Just one. Yeah, I think former Councilman Susan Young made a great point that it would be great to have nine and more people interested. The unfortunate part is I believe that commission couldn't make quorum on some of the things, and they're not getting volunteers.
I agree, that was one of the issues.
And I believe it was the recommendation of the planning commission also to reduce the size of the commission.
I don't believe they missed quorum, but they were close to missing quorum, but they did not miss quorum. And yes, it did come forward from the commission itself to reduce the size, and it's the largest commission that we have as well.
All right.
Excuse me, Bridget shared something to say.
Sorry, Mayor, just to clarify, Councilman Rain, your motion, as I hear you state, it would be to strike the words from the appointee shall have the terms as follows, including the word thereafter, and then start with the word members. Is that correct?
Thank you, yes, yes. It's not the full sentence, it's just that first, up until the semicolon.
Thank you.
All right, any further discussion?
The only other question I had, if a person steps down, they just pick up the remainder of that term for an appointed position?
Correct. Is that the current rules of procedure?
Yes, it is. That would remain the same, right?
Correct.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Dan, can you take us into the recruitment process?
Yeah, members of the council, during the last city council workshop, there was some discussion that was held on for the city administrative position that was vacated when Aaron took the position in Rochester of how to handle recruitment for that position. Aaron had presented some information on hiring an outside search firm. However, during the conversation, it looked like there wanted to be some discussion on what it would look like to hold an internal recruitment. What you have before you in the staff report is an outline of what an internal recruitment would look like. Granted, what's listed in that report is not all-inclusive of every single step that's included in an internal recruitment. However, I tried to hit some of the high points and basically break it down into separate phases. However, Phase Three runs in conjunction with Phase Two, so they'd be happening at the same time. And just to kind of help show the overall timeline of what this actually would look like, I actually developed a chart, since I'm more of a visual person when you're looking at something with the head stuff that runs consecutively. Basically, looking at the first, which is the Phase One, which is basically updating the position profile, position description, approving what application materials are going to be, job posting, where we're going to post it, appointing or determining who actually collects the applications, also assigning members to the review committee, and then as well as determining the process steps. I estimate that would take anywhere between one to four weeks to complete. This is, in my estimation, one of the most critical components of the whole recruitment process, because this will actually set the stage for staff to how to manage that recruitment process. It's also the opportunity for you as a council to offer input as to what you want to see in the next city administrator. So as you go through this, if we're going to put time into something, I'd recommend putting more time into Phase One to make sure that we have a very clear, defined set of goals and processes that we follow for the internal recruitment, for the recruitment process. One of the main things is, is as we kind of get involved in the process, if applicants want to know what the next steps are, we want to be able to provide that to the applicant pool at that point. So the recommendation, this first part would take approximately four weeks. Recommendation would be that there be a meeting held, there's a special meeting that only discusses the recruitment process. I think there's probably, there's a lot of material here that would need to be covered during that. That being said, there has been some start work, started on updating the position profile and the description, and some pre-work done on where it could be posted. So I put those down as 25% completed. Again, there's still a lot of involvement or information required for the council to can't take those through 200%, but those processes have been started. Once the process of Phase One gets completed, then we actually enter into the recruitment phase. Typically, historically, we posted jobs here in the city of Forest Lake for about four weeks, from start to finish. There was some discussion at the last meeting as if we're in the recruitment process and we're just not seeing quality applicants, you know, are we able to basically re-track and reset for a different, and doing an external, you know, hire the external partner to basically manage recruitment? And there would be at this point, so basically you want to post a position out for about four weeks, in my estimation, just to start to see what the actual applicant pool looks like for an internal recruitment. And then kind of prior to going through the actual scoring of those applications and making those connections to determining who actually is the first round candidate out of the initial pool, you want to go, do we have a good pool here to move forward with, or we want to dump the whole bucket back in and start from scratch? So that decision point would happen somewhere in Phase Two, which you're looking at probably, you know, week eight if we start this. I mean, basically, each period up on the front is one week, so you're looking at probably the end of the job posting, which is about week eight, is when you make the decision whether or not you feel like you have a solid applicant pool there. Also, parts of that second round, that Phase Two and Phase Three, would basically be to start the application scoring. So you'd have to use those, you'd develop scoring criteria for how you score all of the applications. You would then go through and score the applications you received, using that scoring criteria as a gauge, as a metric, to see who kind of makes that first-round cut that comes in. And here, what we've done in the past, once applicants score at a certain level, we've been given for testing. And again, testing for each position varies typically for recruitments inside the city of Forest Lake. We've done first-round wonder look testing, which is usually a personality profile and a cognitive function test. Get the results of those, kind of run those in conjunction with some of the other scoring criteria to kind of make the determination who's going to come in for that first interview. And then from there, do first-round interviews. So that would kind of run through your Phase Two, Phase Three evaluation. Again, kind of stressing here during this period, any application that's received, all those applications are private data. So at any council meeting, if there's a discussion on how's the candidate pool looking, or like these candidates, it'd have to be used, using like candidate A, candidate B, candidate one, candidate two. So you couldn't say, you know, the person's name, because at this point, that is all private data. It's when you make the determination in the Phase Four, when you're really starting to narrow down and determining your pool of finalists, is when that applicant data becomes public. So if you narrow down to see a pool of four candidates that are final, at that point, once you make the decision, these are the four we want to move forward with, then that application becomes, that information becomes public information at that point. And then you want to run them through the formal kind of final interview process. This could be interviews with, before the whole council, with department heads, they could get cities, you know, kind of a tour of the city. There's a bunch of different options for how you want to kind of manage and handle that second and final interview process with the candidates. You could also make them present to council to see what did they present like, give them kind of a scenario, and say, here's a model, come up with a presentation for us, and just to kind of see how they would handle and address some of these situations. So there's a lot of kind of open ideas that you could go for that final, you know, kind of interview slash review process. Again, if you're going to do that, set that up on Phase One, so the candidates kind of know what that process is going down the line. Once you go through that final interview process, at this point, you want to go through a full reference background educational check to make sure that their materials check out. You'd also want to start the offering contract negotiations with the finalist. It's also recommended by the League of Minnesota is that once you get to this point, that you have a contingency applicant, just in case for some unknown reason, that one that you have, your top candidate doesn't work out, that you basically have one kind of in the wings that you could bring onboard if your negotiations break down, something doesn't work out with that first candidate, you have somebody there to kind of keep that process moving along. And then once the contract is negotiated and finalized, it would be brought forward for council consideration and approval. And then based on what that happens, you start the timeline that comes on clock to when they start. Just again, at a high level, I'm looking at, when I estimated all these events out, now assuming that this thing goes like clockwork from start to finish, you know, I estimated it somewhere in the ballpark of about 20, I think it was like 21 or 22 weeks, which would put, assuming a four-week notification and starting period for the next administrator, the start date would be late June, early July. And again, that's assuming that Period One or Phase One gets on track for a position posting in about the middle of March. So I mean, there's a little bit of accelerated timeline in there, but I think if, you know, the Phase One gets determined, that's kind of, that's going to set your whole that's going to set your whole trajectory in terms of are we going to start early or start later? But you're looking at roughly about five, five and a half months for an internal recruitment, which does kind of line up, it does line up with what some of the outside search firms are saying too for their recruitment strategy at that point as well. So at that point, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. I guess from a staff perspective, we're just looking for direction. Do you want us to pursue an internal recruitment? Do you want us to go back out and reach for the, you know, the search firms? I mean, we're just looking for a direction, and then if we go with the internal, I would also request that we set the date for that first meeting, or we can actually start the process through that Phase One consideration and get those documents created and get ready for posting on that.
Go ahead, Ed.
Yeah, a question, are we allowed to tape interviews with these candidates?
Like videotape them? I would believe the finalists, we would be.
I mean, is there a legal thing?
Well, I think the issue that Dan is pointing out to is the data practices issue really, that until they're a finalist, that applicant's information is not public, it's private data until they were named as a finalist. Once they're a finalist, then that information comes out there, and that's where, excuse me, some of the materials that's alluded to, you know, you have to be careful with how data is presented, and so as information is provided to the council through the process, it needs to be, care needs to be taken that the identification of the individual is not shared with the council until they're a finalist.
Technically, I think they, they can videotape it, I don't, but you're right. It's more about making sure that that doesn't get out in the person's name and things like that, but legally, I think they can tape it, am I correct?
Mayor, Representative of the council, as far as taping, what are you talking about, some type of the sort of pre-finalist?
Interview.
Yes, it's just a matter of that the data itself is not public, so that's the distinction.
All right. Any other questions?
Dan, so thank you for putting this together. It's a really detailed step that walks through kind of what the process would look like internally. My question is, who manages that?
Yeah, that's the.
Where I'm challenged.
So at this point, you know, historically, I've managed recruitments. You know, I've been the one that sets all this stuff up and basically gets the train out of the station, manages it, contact, all this stuff. At this point, however, if I become a candidate, I'm no longer able to manage the recruitment. So I think just for the sake of starting this process out would be the best point, would basically like potentially have Bailey just do the, become the point, you know, for assembling or compiling or receiving the applications. She'd become the point for people asking questions, so that way, you know, there's no, because again, if I'm in, if I put my head under the ring on this recruitment process, there needs to be firewalls between me and the process. You know, and at a certain point, I need to basically back out of this and let this thing run as if it was a recruitment that I, you know, wasn't, there needs to be basically a very clear demarcation between me and the process. So I think initially, the best approach I would say for this recruitment would be run it as if I can't manage this process, just from the sake of, you know, and if down the road, I do not end up applying for it, I'd be happy to take that role back on, but I think from the outset of the gates, it's best to design it assuming that I won't be able to manage that process.
It just seems that the recruitment firm would be a lot easier, a lot more thorough, more educated in the process. Seems like a big job for the council to be taking on, really.
Yeah, there is, I mean, and reality, evaluations, the, I mean, there is a lot of, I mean, again, assuming that I'm not able to manage the recruitment, there is a lot of hands-on work that's required with the recruitment in terms of application scoring, criteria development, just even answering questions from applicants. I mean, there's a lot of communication to go back and forth. Now granted, I've had conversations with Bailey just to make sure that she'd be able to kind of manage that, and she's been willing to say, yeah, I can, you'll handle that. But even to the point if an applicant asks a question of a certain portion of city operations, you know, I mean, some of that would, she would need to kind of ferret out and try to determine, you know, to get the application answer back. Because again, I wouldn't want to be the one that would be directing that response back just from the sake that, you know, I don't want any implication that I try to influence the process.
Dan, if we went to an outside recruiter, but you still need to contact with the city with them.
Correct.
You'd still have to remove yourself.
Correct. Well, the recruiter would then probably pour through Bailey at that point, or a member of the council that's designated, that would be the point person at that point. Again, the benefit of the outside recruiter at this point is all of what you see here, they manage. You know, they post it, they review the applications, they basically, there is council input involved, where they basically say, here's kind of our candidate pool, take a look at it. You know, what candidates do you kind of like? There's still some in the review process, but kind of more along the day-to-day, you know, compiling all that application stuff, that's all managed by the recruitment firm at that point. So, you know, bringing it in-house, I mean, there is, you know.
Well, it comes with some guarantees, doesn't it? I mean, there's some other issues there that could save us a lot of time in the long run, I believe. I absolutely believe that.
Some pretty sensitive information that gets exchanged in that process too, and just
Yeah.
the level of confidentiality that's needed to be maintained and just the complexity with a really small staff of, and with all due respect to Bailey and her capabilities, you are still learning your role, and Dan is in an interim role, serving two positions. I just, I think it's a lot to take in-house, and, and I looked at this list, and I guess that's part of the value that you get from an external recruitment.
I think it'd be overwhelming.
I mean, and I don't disagree that there'd be a lot of extra lift on staff's part doing it internally. I also just don't want to downplay that, if it goes internal, there's a lot of on the councils too. I mean, just kind of given where we kind of sit, the way I would envision this would be, you know, Bailey kind of would just become like the funnel and grab all the information, but then like the actual decisions and stuff would be up here with whoever it is designated on that portion. So there would need to be additional involvement from council level, because again, the ultimate decision lies with you, where you guys end up with the next administrator.
Well, that's where I look at it is, you know, we're developing or approving the job descriptions. We're doing the interviews, we're making the choice. I mean, we're not just telling firms to, you know, go find us somebody and bring them here. They're going to bring us a pool of candidates, you know, we still have to filter through that. I don't see the value in the 20 to 30,000 or whatever range it was that, that came. I think the way this is lined up, yeah, we can shift the gear and go that route in four weeks or wherever we see that if, you know, if it does start to become too much or we see it, but I don't see a recruiting firm, a search firm bringing us, you know, candidates that aren't already within the area that aren't aware that this job is going to open up. And really, that's the only criteria that I think that, you know, they could bring to the table, the rest we have to do ourselves anyway.
And I think to that point, I think Phase One, regardless, I mean, an extra, a search firm would assist with that since that's their expertise, they'd basically help wordsmith that a little bit easier than there's, you'd start maybe at, say, 50% or 60% completion rate versus going at 25%. However, we do have the existing documents, so some of that Phase One work has to get done regardless, like you stated. So I mean, you could start to ball down that path and basically say, okay, we're going to have a meeting, do Phase One work and take a look at it. And again, with the bio point of if you open it up, we're just not getting the applicant pool, I mean, that is an option. However, you know, I can get this as set up as I possibly can, you know, and bring this forward and and try to get everything sought through and become a very, you know, again, this was basically high level because I didn't know if we were going to go internal. To get direction to go internal, this becomes the next big project that I kind of focus in on, and look at it from the perspective of how do we manage this if I can't manage it, for lack of a better term? You know, how do I tee this up so it is successful if I end up do managing it or if I don't manage it, you know? So either, I mean, just know, I mean, I can do a lot of this back work here, I mean, there's a lot of steps, but again, I also want to stress the fact that going on the internal side, there's a little bit more, there's a little bit more hands-on at the council level than a search firm. It's not, pick up the phone, call the search recruiter up, I mean, at this point, you'd have to, the committee or whoever is designated to that, you know, making those decisions would be the ones that are kind of doing the work that a search firm would do. So I also just want to be clear that there is some, you know, there is a little bit of extra work on the council level with an internal that would be there regardless if I'm running it or if Bailey runs it, so that is there.
Well, I like, you know, I like what's laid out here. You know, it's a lot, a logical progression. We're not using a lot of time here to give internal recruitment a try. I'd like to see us still go down that path. You can always switch later, it's not going to cost us any more money to do that if we lose two or three weeks of time. You know, that, that is a factor, but I think overall, I think we're going to be able to find a really good pool of local candidates. And to me, that's very important too. I, I, I think having somebody local within the area, within the metro experiences and awareness is, that's a big factor to me. Go ahead, Ed.
I was just going to say, I would at least like to try to post locally and see, you know, cast a net and see how many candidates we have before we go to outsource. I mean, maybe that we don't have very many, in which case you'd have to go outsource.
So, so if we're going to have a workshop to start the Phase One items, can we also, as part of that workshop, talk through roles of who, who does what, so we're clear of what's personnel committee or what might be full council as we move through Phase Two, Phase Three? Think you want to kind of have that nailed in, because what we don't, what I wouldn't want to see happen is start to get applicants in and have some role. Not being clear on role or what the process looks like. I think we just want to kind of have that nailed down so we all understand from the get-go what that, what that's going to look like. Even if it is just a cast in net, once you've cast in net, you have to be prepared for what comes back, so.
Well, I don't know really workshop or, you know, I mean, position description has been updated a fair amount.
It's been slightly outdated, there's still some things in like the community profile that are, at this point, pretty dated. We took a stab at just updating the text, but again, I, I think it's fairly critical, you know, for input from the council to basically say.
I, I guess what I'm just looking at is, I don't know if it's something that, you know, we can review independently, material, give you the feedback and at our next meeting, either approve it or not, without having to burn up the time for a workshop on it.
I mean, if you want, I mean, I can take it back and do my best, try to get the best estimates I can and then basically maybe float it out there just for feedback as it.
I think if we just, you know, if we're emailing the materials individually and just send you our thoughts on it or, and/or other things we'd like to see in it, at the next meeting, it's, you know, we're not starting from zero. We're going to have virtually finished product without, you know, having a workshop on job description.
I, I think the key thing is though too, like, you know, with the process is that before this launches and goes, I want this thing to be as turnkey as possible.
Correct.
Again, like, you know, Mara stated was basically, once that nets cast, you don't know what's going to come in, and it's got to, we got to try to figure out all of those little nuanced questions that come up and where that kind of filters and what the steps are. Because if a candidate calls in two days afterwards and says, when's the second interview, or what's their status for interviews, what are you going to do? We got to have an answer for that. I mean, I think if we're going to put our best foot forward for candidates, we have to show interviews are scheduled to take place potentially at the end of March. This is the process, we're going to ask you to do a, you know, testing and then hear, and then you'll know by a certain such dates. I mean, presenting this as polished as possible, I think is going to help to attract the next level candidates that we're looking for as well, so.
Well, and that's typically what you do with any other job recruitment within the city.
Correct. Typically though, it's, you know, with my involvement in there, I can kind of massage it as we go along. Having to kind of anticipate what all the questions are going to be at the onset, and then potentially having to turnkey it over is a little bit different. I think it's, I think it's still approachable, I think it's still something that I can accomplish, you know, in advance for the next meeting, so.
All right.
Sort of piggyback on your, your comment on kind of a staff to draft the position profile and the job requirements. Would it also be helpful to put at least a straw man together of suggested names and roles for each of the steps, just so that when we're reviewing that position description, we're also reviewing a proposal of who does what? It's easier to, for us to react to something that's a proposal or a plan rather than come up from scratch?
Yeah, I think, I mean, if the direction at this point is to bring this in-house and do an internal, I mean, I, I think the next iteration, what you would see here would be, would be pretty much here's a night, here's like a pretty detailed document set that shows what the recruitment would look like. Then you can change, I don't want to do a wonder look test, I'd rather do a, you know, have a red paper. Or have them do a power presentation, or have them do a video, or whatever that aspect is, just kind of swap out options at that point. It's just, to get to that level of detail, I mean, there's a lot of time involved on my end just to kind of get this set up. So I just ask for a little bit of time between now and, you know, I'll do whatever I can to try to get it done for the next meeting, but two weeks out, there's not a lot of time in there for me to kind of go through this level of detail to really parse all of the answers out and kind of go through and make sure everybody internally is also keyed up in what their roles, responsibilities are going to be, and then bring basically something together in March where it says, this council number X goes here, council number Y goes here, we can just change and just drop a few things out. There would be, at one meeting, there would be the option to basically at that point, fully wrap the recruitment, and then, you know, at that point, again, you know, I, I may have made the decision, you know, whether or not I'm in or out, but again, I get this point, I'll design it up for, you know, the option of me not being a candidate, or being a candidate for it potentially, just so there's that firewall there.
All right. Is there any existing protocol for like when Aaron was hired, or do we have any record of that?
And that's what we're using for the basis right now, so there was a search firm, we do, I do have all those documents that.
Are they available to us?
I can forward those on, and I think the, the existing position profile and position description was part of a previous packet that went to, I think, at a workshop, but I can definitely be forward those out because I have those, I also can see if I can find.
Is that not a violation of the agreement with the?
No, because the city actually would own the doc, the data on those documents, so there are to distribute as we need to. So I can, I can forward those on, I don't know if I have, I'd have to go back through the actual finalist documents in the last recruitment to kind of base what these last recruiters said, I don't know if we have.
That would be very helpful, it's almost.
And maybe I'll go through and redact out names, but I don't know where those all are. I mean, at this point, it's probably best just to start from scratch.
I'm not interested in the names.
I can take a look and just see what they had for a process, you know, and just say.
That's what I'm looking for, the process they used.
Yeah, I can, now, I would piggyback off what an external recruiter would use for this type of process, because again, this type of recruitment, it's slightly different than the ones that we've managed here because we've, we don't recruit for administrator all that often, you know, versus, you know.
But we've had two relatively recent.
And I, I've been using all those kind of baseline documents for, as they go through this process, so.
All right. So you have kind of a consensus on going forward?
I got the direction, I will start putting some details here and I'll bring something forward at a future meeting unless I hear otherwise.
All right, thank you. Parks, Lakes and Trails appointment, I have to hold off on that one till our next meeting as the applicant may have some issues with making the meetings, so I'm trying to work that out, so I'm going to hold off on that for now. And so that moves us to F, Winix Supply Invoices.
Make a motion we pay the Winix Supply invoices.
I'll second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And one abstained? Ace Hardware Invoices.
I'll make a motion that we pay the Ace Hardware invoices.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.
One abstained. All right, staff updates. Donovan?
Sure. I just want to remind you that we're continuing our community conversations. Tomorrow evening is the open house, six to eight PM in the upstairs community room, and that's for housing, water resources and community facilities. You'll see Tim, who is there tonight with Rice Creek Watershed, coming back again tomorrow night. And the next week, the twenty-seventh, is Parks. And also, I want to make a, I'll make a request, it's kind of staff organizational, they make a request to Administrator Undum so that to add to Chief Peterson's job duties to elbow me if I start a presentation without starting the video.
I was watching, I'm looking at your monitor, I'm like, I think he winds up there.
Apologize for that.
Oh, no problem.
Dan, Chief Peterson, any updates?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and city council members, I have a couple of updates for you. One of our officers, Officer Justin Bowden, was offered and accepted a job with the Eagan Police Department. His last day with us will be February 24th. And I just want to publicly thank Justin for his 11 years of service to the Forsyth Police Department and especially the community. It's going to be a big loss having him leave. And with that, I have sent a formal request to City Administrator Dan Undum, I think it's the first time I was able to say that, to start a recruitment process to fill the police officer vacancy. My goal would be to start that recruitment process hopefully in March. My goal would be to start that recruitment process hopefully in March. And then secondly, School Superintendent Dr. Massey reached out to me and has requested another two-year agreement between the school district and the city. He'd like to continue to have three police officers assigned to the schools as school resource officers and I have afforded the updated agreement to our city attorney for review and I'm hoping that we can possibly have that on the next city council agenda. Other than that, that's all I have for you unless you have questions for me.
Chief, because you recently hired three officers, are there any still candidates in that pool?
Unfortunately, there's not. We hired our top three that we wanted to hire and the next three actually were hired at different departments soon afterwards. So there's nobody on that eligibility list right now that we would.
Starting from zero.
We'd be starting from scratch, yes.
Will you use the same process? Because that seemed to be very successful.
Yeah, I think we will.
All right, thank you. Chief Newman?
Mayor members of the council, we're at day six of our pre-fire planning program. We've completed the database training. We added 223 properties into the database. We've completed 10 pre-plans last week and are expecting to complete 12 more by the end of Wednesday and that will put our database of completed companies in Forest Lake at 102 by the end of next week. So we're moving forward with it. Gina's doing a good job and we're still shooting for August to have all the businesses done in both Forest Lake and Columbus. Tomorrow night is our first hands-only CPR class, starts at seven. The class actually filled up a couple of weeks ago before it even hit the paper and I'm already starting a waiting list and hopefully we'll get another class scheduled in March. On Saturday, we did our physical agility test for potential new candidates and I'm happy to say that we've got four people going through four interviews, which will be held on Saturday. And that's all I have unless you have questions for me.
With the four candidates, I mean, we have a certain threshold you're aiming for as far as volunteer firefighters go or is there a limit to how many firefighters we can have?
Well, we try to keep that number at about 32. That's the good spot. Unfortunately, with volunteer firefighters, they don't always tell you when they're going to retire. It's typically, even though we ask that at our relief meetings, you usually find that out within 30 days of retirement, so we do have challenges with that. Currently, we're at 31 for staffing and we do have some retirements coming up, so hopefully we'll be able to, the four people that are trying out, they'll go through the whole process and hopefully we'll get four new firefighters that will start for one.
All right. Thank you, chief. Any other questions to the chief? Bailey?
Nothing for me, thank you.
All right. And Administrator Undom?
I have a couple of updates. Tomorrow, we have the mediation session for the airport paving project down in Minneapolis, so that should be an all-day event and talked to Jim this afternoon and he's convinced it's going to be an all-day event, so he said, kind of buckle down for the sequestering in the conference room all day. February 27th, the workshop night, we're looking at doing a, before the workshop actually officially starts is a joint meeting with the Columbus City Council to discuss the 180th interchange. That date looks like it's working for City of Columbus, so they are going to come here and we'll do a joint meeting just to discuss that 180th interchange project and then after that meeting adjourns, we'll go right into the workshop at that point and then there's some comp plan mapping that we're just looking to get some feedback on before we kind of finalize it to the next stage. So the 27th is looking to be like the 180th kind of comp plan night is what it's kind of shaking out to be for the workshop. For the, the senior center, we are, we do have quotes on the dishwasher and front door quotes are coming in. Everything else up at the senior center at this point is, the stove is back up and functional and it actually is working, so once we get the quotes back, we'll have some numbers as to what it take, but this is dishwasher at this point and those front door are kind of the only little outside items. We're also working through some LED light improvements there, so when the ballast go out and the higher ones, we're starting to kind of work through and replace those up and get them up over to converted from fluorescent over to LED work there. I met with the new airport chair this morning and kind of gave him a download on what's going on with the airport commission and kind of gave him some information, some background as much as I had available to me at the time, so he has as much information as I had available this morning to him, so it was a good meeting, met for about an hour and a half, kind of went through some information there. And the last thing I have is Flake Fest starts, I believe, on this upcoming weekend and there's a full week of activities and just want to thank Jamie for all the work that she's done. She's done a really nice job of kind of reaching out to community groups and having them kind of host the different events, do the things, so there's actually a full calendar of events that we're now hosting. So Flake Fest has kind of rebloomed into this new kind of community focused event. She's done a really nice job of getting it all out together and, and is now doing some of the promotion outreach on that. So Flake Fest starts this weekend and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
No questions?
Can we leave it at 7:30?
7:30 tomorrow.
Okay.
All right.
At night.
Exactly.
Thank you, Ed. Anything?
Thank you, honor, nothing for me.
All right. Brian?
Mayor of State Council, I do have a few things just to go over. One, just be looking for a nod from you guys tonight to obtain some additional pricing on the listation project to do two extra stations with the reserve funds that are still available with the bonding that we completed. So basically, if you guys are okay with that, I would go and obtain pricing for listations 12T and 4C based on what public works, as high priorities at this time are, and then bring that back to you for approval and then execute an actual change order before we proceed with any work on that. So that'll probably be brought forward in March. Project, current project is about 40% in, things are going well. We stopped a little bit here in the cold, but do anticipate the crew is starting up full-time again in March. Certainly, we're trying to target the listations that are in high groundwater areas, so we don't have to deal with that in the spring before we get the structure set in the winter time, so I think things will proceed nicely with that. Other updates I have is, I believe Dan emailed out the Highway 97 access management study that MINDOT has a draft out, so I certainly encourage you guys to review that and provide comments back to Dan so we can respond to MINDOTS as that obviously will be used as a planning guide, a resource for potential grants and opportunities to enhance the 97 corridor and also it'd be nice to have that completed and approved as the community continues to pursue the 97 bonding bill. Some exciting news that I will plan on bringing, a resolution of support. Just want to give you a heads up at the next city council meeting is there's a grand opportunity out there, the quarters of commerce cannot be led by MINDOT, it has to be led by the county or city. Some Washington counties taking the lead on this. This actually is addressing the stretch of Highway 97 between 35 and 61. Within the resolution of support, I'll be asking your support, taking that from, you know, general scope, two lanes to four lanes. We did revise some language in that because obviously if you go to four lanes, you got a lot of more distance to cross if you wanted to make the left-hand turn, think of areas like Florid Bay that we would be also reviewing in that, in adding intersection control is needed to maintain neighborhood access along 97. So I want to make sure that was in that language, too, but basically, this is really a result of that's Washington counties, you know, for a number of years listened to the city council Forest Lake, yeah, city council and staff and MINDOTS and Commissioner Miran is definitely noted this need for expansion, is a proponent of this, too. So that's great news and hopefully as things continue, this is an opportunity that would be for a future project with a significant amount of funding. Also then, wanted to provide just some updates on the I-35 project. I feel that some questions here and there from staff and, you know, just make sure everyone's on the same page. You know, obviously, we've got the 35 project going on that's led, MINDOT-led, no local participation on this project, but also NOKA County's doing a significant amount of work in this next summer as well. So where freeway road or County Road 54 comes up to 23 right now on the west side of 35, east, just east of the Holiday Gas Station, that will get cut off and they'll be building a roundabout on 23 to the west of Holiday Gas Station and County Road 54 to the south.
Running aces there?
Yep, very far to the south and past the horse track race, all gets redone and significantly improved and upgraded.
Now, the, oh, sorry, downgraded with the roundabout.
Is that the location of the hotel, too, right at the roundabout?
I'm not exactly sure where the site hotel is at this time, especially with the introduction of the bituminous plant. Certainly, that can be a question you can ask city council of Columbus when they come here to a joint meeting and I just haven't dug into the details on that. So that project's all going to happen in 18 and then, as you know, with the MINDOT project, they'll start on portions of the six and a half miles of existing roadway and then they'll also be redoing the 35W flyover bridge, south end of the project, and also the realignment of the new Highway 8 bridge on the north end. And then they'll move into winter and button things up and then in 19, the bridge at 97 and 23, 35 will get redone. And that's also when Columbus-led MINDOT cooperative agreement project will move forward on realigning north side of Hornsby. That was going to be an 18 project. Projects delays have pushed that to a 19 project, so a lot of different lead projects, NOKA County-led, Columbus-led, MINDOT-led projects that are all going on that area that have certainly gone through public outreach the last four or five years, so.
Brian, do you know if, when they do that realignment on Hornsby, will there be a traffic light control at that intersection? Because I know that came up in the public sector in Columbus.
So that was going through an intersection control evaluation. I haven't heard the results of that yet, whether that would be a roundabout or a signal, but most certainly it's going to probably promote one of the two.
Because you can't get out of there now.
I totally agree.
So I'm, I'm going to preempt here. As they're doing the 35 project, I know there's going to be, you know, tens of thousands yards of excess dirt coming out of there. Can you talk to the contractor or MINDOT? Would they be able to build a berm along the edge of 35 where Clear Lake is to help instead of a sound wall if we can put a five, six, eight-foot berm out there?
Well, that project required a pretty significant environmental assessment worksheet process and obviously that if we come now at this stage of game to fill those wetlands, that would certainly take a way different route on the project schedule and requirements. So your short answer is no.
Okay.
But if you have.
I had to ask anyway, I was just thinking about it.
If there's certainly a need in town or of developers, you know, Schaefer contractors, there is the contractor, it certainly can get you any contact you need. As construction starts ramping up, we'll start having more of those coordination buildings that they've rented, MINDOTS rented a building right in downtown to have a whole top floor of office space for the design build process, so there'll be a lot of engagement there, but.
All right. Thank you, Ryan. Sam?
Hi, since the last meeting, I attended two school board meetings, mostly they're dealing with, you know, policy decisions and things that they have to deal with that are state mandated, I guess, and, and they just did a survey, too, trying to figure out what they could have done different when they were looking for that referendum. Other than that, it was pretty standard stuff, pay the bills, that kind of thing. I did attend the airport commission meeting the other night, asked a couple of questions while I was there and so that's basically what happened.
All right, thank you.
I also attended the airport commission meeting and they appointed a new chair, new to the commission and so I think we're going to have some fresh blood that might be really good as far as, neither side can say that they're not being represented because we've got somebody that's not familiar with either side, so that, I think the meetings will go smoother. It was encouraging, there's a fellow there that presented that wants to put, what is it, three buildings at? Three buildings at the airport? That was, that was good to hear. He's ready to go. He's ready to go start building yesterday, so, you know, that, I think it's going to happen for sure. So that's all I had.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I did have an opportunity to talk to the new member of the airport commission after the meeting and he's looking forward to being on the commission, so. Other than that, you know, I have my regular meetings, nothing real noteworthy on any of them, so pass along to you, Mike.
I attended about half of the airport commission and I, you know, Mr. Gribbovy III spoke earlier and I don't necessarily agree with everything he said, but there was, as usual with that commission, some confrontations and things like that and, and it's just unfortunate that it can't get past some of the issues that are going on there. People need to stop with their personal stuff and just worry about the cities, the city business itself and take your personal stuff out of it. I also attended the planning commission meeting that evening, that same evening, and then the Parks, Lakes and Trails Commission meets tomorrow.
All right, thank you, Mike.
I attended the comp plan, land use and transportation session or a portion of that session. I'm going to try to attend tomorrow's session as well. Also attended the planning commission meeting, just noteworthy, it was fun to see a roomful of families and to hear the number of families that moved to Forest Lake because of Lila and so that's exciting, an exciting story and exciting to see their expansion at Headwaters. Have a capable commission meeting on Wednesday. That's it for me.
Quick clarification, Donovan, did that get appealed?
It did not.
Thank you.
It's still open till Wednesday, but is it's point now?
I wasn't sure, thanks.
All right. I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Ed, we have a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.